We're going to go ahead and get started. I had some council members looking over some notes before we get going. First item on tonight's work session agenda will be the Eye Wellness Health Program presentation by Pauline Martin of Infirmary Health. How are y'all tonight?
Great, just how are you?
Doing great, thank you.
Thank y'all so much for having us tonight. My name is Pauline Martin. I'm the Director of Infirmary Wellness for Thomas Hospital. This is Jill Everson with me. She's going to be my clicker today. She is also with Thomas Hospital as well. We are proud to present this program. We've actually been doing this program for seven years with our own hospital, and we've seen great results. So we'll get started on the presentation. Our mission statement for Eye Healthy Wellness is to have a comprehensive wellness program that will enhance our community's quality of life. With this type of program, we work together for optimal business success. And what that has included here is healthcare plan cost, decreasing that cost, increasing productivity, recruiting and engaging good employees and retention, lowering the absenteeism rate as well as the presenteeism. A lot of times people show up to work and they're just present. They're not productive. So with wellness, we can actually change that. Also helping the employees' morale as well as customer service. So what is Eye Healthy? Eye Healthy is a program that's designed to improve the health and wellness of employees throughout the city. The city employees, they work together in a community that's very loved by so many, and we want to help them by having optimal health. And in doing that, this program offers many aspects. It offers annual biometric testing, which includes cholesterol screenings. It includes blood pressures. It also includes a health assessment, as well as health education and personal health coaching. The great part about this program is that it's actually individualized for the city employees. It's not a cookie cutter program. It's not something that comes out of a box. We actually work with the employees to find what works best for them. We engage each member of the city, work with them individually, and also get pretty amazing results. We actually currently at the Infirmary Health System have 98% participation in this program, and that is voluntarily. And then we have 5,600 employees. Just to get started, what we usually work with is a business health assessment. We do a survey to the employees to kind of see what they're interested in, and that really helps because that helps us to design the program. Then we look at the biometric testing, getting those results back. Because if we see that a lot of employees have blood pressure problems, then we'll focus on that because that lowers their risk for heart disease and stroke. If we find that a lot of people have higher BMIs, Body Mass Index, weight management issues, then we focus on lowering those as well, which can also lead to heart disease and stroke. If you're self-insured and you have a claim for stroke or heart disease or a heart attack, it can cost between $20,000 and $30,000. It's a lot of money. If you do a prevent defense, you're going to be a lot better off by keeping your employees healthy. The next few pages just talk about each individual aspect of the program. Then we go into the kickoff and the incentive structure. By incentivizing the employees and giving them some information about the program, it really gets them excited about the program and keeping their program. The portal system that we have that we utilize helps them keep up with their program. So they also get to keep up with points that they earn throughout the year. And incentivizing them helps to not only get a better, healthy result, but it also incentivizes them to do more things as well. So the onsite testing, we actually come to the employees. We don't ask them to come to the hospital. We come to them in their work environment. It's a fun atmosphere. It's like a health fair. We do the testing. It's a small finger prick. Doesn't hurt. We do the blood pressures there. We don't wear white lab coats, so we get a lot better results for blood pressures. But those are the types of biometric screens that we do. Next few pages just give you those as well. The population health analysis is really cool because what it does is it gives you a snapshot of what your health looks like. So from that, once we take the biometric screenings, we are able to give you a result that shows the population health analysis. So you can see a snapshot of your employees. We can't give you individualized results because that would be a HIPAA violation, but we do give you an aggregate report that shows you that this percentage has high blood pressure. This percentage has high cholesterol. This percentage has high BMI. That way we can focus the program in onto those types of subjects. The next page just talks about the Eye Healthy program and what is actually involved in it. The employees would have access to a portal system where they can keep up with their points, keep up with their biometric testing, keep up with any incentives that they are doing, as well as challenges, health challenges. They can also have access to education, as well as coaching and even smoking cessation. I'm sure you may have a few people in the city that smoke. So we would be able to help those employees to change those habits. We also have an option for telephonic coaching. Some people may not have time during the day to actually sit down with a coach. So there are plenty of telephonic coaching opportunities that are anytime during the afternoon or evening hours. So it's catered to all of the employees. Chronic care management, a lot of times with chronic care management of certain diseases like asthma, diabetes, congestive heart failure, coronary artery disease, they need special help and accommodations to get those diseases under control. We can work with them in exercise and diet, making sure they're taking their medications, and making sure that they're going to visit their physicians regularly as well. Looking at a portal system for this tracker, we, like I said before, we have a portal system that they would have access to. They can access and track anything from their food, exercise, blood pressure, meal planning. The health coach that would be assigned for these employees would help them set this up, give them access to it, and help them understand that portal system. It's really easy. It's actually on the phone as well as there's a mobile app. So you can download that app and you can access it from anywhere. Looking at the challenges in the seminars, we bring those challenges and seminars to the employees. So we actually come onsite, work with them, different ideas that they actually, when they fill out a survey before with their biometric testing, that's where the ideas come from. We don't give them the ideas. The ideas come from the employees themselves. Also comes from those during the coaching sessions that we have one-on-one. So these are just a few ideas of what we have here, as well as the next page with newsletters. A monthly newsletter talking about different topics, different ideas that can help lower cholesterol, lower the BMI, lower blood pressure. We have exercise physiologists on staff, as well as nurses and physicians. But the resources that we have, God bless you, the resources that we have from Thomas Hospital is phenomenal, and that's what makes this program work. We pull resources from our diabetic resource center. We pull resources from our physicians. We just did a spot check, and we had really great results. A spot check was for cancer spots on people in the community. And we actually did it at Thomas Hospital with, Jill, what was our results with that spot check? Several percentage?
We had over 230 people that came through between the different facilities, and about 36% had some kind of spot that needed follow-up.
So giving those types of services to our community is very important because otherwise they wouldn't have the access to that. Being able to give those types of services to the employees, they would be able to do that here at the facility so that they wouldn't have to go seek those types of screenings. Just to give you some success, one of our success stories is that we had an employee that lost 20 pounds. Originally, their blood pressure was 153 over 101. They had, they were taking antihypertensive medication, as well as metformin due to an increase in blood sugar. With the interventions that we were able to give them and the coaching that we were able to give them, working with them, they were able to lower their blood pressure, get off of that medication, as well as lower the cost that it would have cost to that company. So there is some return on investment. There is an option for some forecasted decreased costs, which are very important in a healthcare plan. The next success story that we have, one of our clients had a decreased A1C for type 2 diabetes. They had a five-year history. They were able to lower that, as well as lower medications, which, if you know about diabetes, is very expensive, very expensive medication. Our Eye Healthy goals are to help engage employees and to help with the presenteeism because we don't want employees just to be present at work. We want them to be productive. We want to help lower health costs, and we also want to increase the productivity and workforce, as well as improve morale. What we found with Thomas Hospital is that the employees seem to be more engaged. A lot of them have had great success stories. But as a hospital system, we feel like it is our responsibility to work together with our city to provide these services and to help the community with their healthcare needs. Do you have any questions so far? I know I went through that really fast.
Questions, council, mayor?
I've already been meeting with them, so it's, I think, a lot of good information. I like the fact that you're incentivizing it and making it fun. This is, of course, a choice, and you can participate or not. But I do think the way that it's being approached is you get a lot of participation, and we all win.
Absolutely.
So I guess that brings me to my question. How do you, how does one participate in this program?
What we do is we have a contract through our hospital that we work with. So with the participation, what we would do is get an eligibility file from the insurance company. So we have that eligibility file. We work with those who are eligible for the program. The biometric testing, as cost-wise, is $50 per employee. That's one-time fee per year. So the biometric testing is one time a year. The cost for the program for per employee per month is $10 per employee per month, which is a pretty amazing price. Once again, we do feel like that this is not something that we want to profit from. We want to profit in the sense to help our community be healthier and stronger.
Questions, council? Do you have some, you gave a couple of success stories in there. Do you have a municipality or other, you know, large company? And you may not be able to give the company name, but maybe you can give, you know, the size of the company and give us an example of how much their healthcare costs decreased?
We have three large companies. Some build ships and some build, some work with chemicals. So we, those large companies have seen significant decreases in healthcare costs. Some that are health, self-insured, they've seen a great return on investment, looking at $20,000 to $30,000 per year. It's pretty amazing to see the significant decreases, and a lot of that has to do with smoking cessation, the one-on-one coaching, and being able to go and meet those employees face-to-face. Most employees don't want to talk or don't have time to talk to their doctor about those types of health changes.
That was a question I was going to ask because a lot of this, you would think they would be getting the coaching from their doctors.
No, sir. A lot of times physicians, many physicians still do have time, but a lot of them don't because they're seeing patients back-to-back. And that's where we feel like we're the liaison between the physician and the patient or the employee because we can give them those tools that they need.
So there's online tools and resources, and then there's phone you can call. Is there a limit on how many times an employee can call and ask questions?
No, not at all. Unlimited.
How long does it take you to respond to, say, a phone call?
It's an immediate response. When someone calls, within 24 hours, the coach will return their phone call. We have coaches in Mobile and Baldwin County ready to help with that phone call.
Is this done at the hospital or Wellness Center?
It's done at the Wellness Center, but it's also done at the hospital, too. We actually don't stay in the Wellness Center or the hospital. We bring it to you because we're all portable. So we bring those services to you.
So you're going to fill out a contract, get it all filled out, and pay $60 a year?
$10 per employee per month.
Or $10 a month or $10 a year?
$10 per employee per month.
Per month.
$50 one time per month.
One time, one time a year. Here is the breakdown for you. With those aggregate results that we get from the biometric testing, we pull everything together. That way we can kind of give you a snapshot. If you look at an iceberg, you can see the tip of the iceberg at the top, but you can't see what lies underneath. And a lot of times with healthcare, there's a lot of underlying issues, and you don't really see it until they surface. And what we try to do is help get a hold of those underlying issues like high blood pressure, cholesterol, and body mass index so that we can address those issues before they get to a higher degree.
How do you communicate between the patient and the doctor?
What we do is we work with the patient. If we need to make some phone calls, we work with our medical director. If we are needing to address that, we also have nurses on staff, too, that can call and be a liaison. The resources at Thomas Hospital is pretty amazing with the physicians, the nurses, the dietitians, the exercise physiologists. So we work together in communication because we, like I said, we feel like this is our responsibility as a healthcare organization.
This says a minimum participation of 50 employees. If you don't get that, we're not doing this, or is it?
No, it's fine. I'm pretty sure that there would be 50 people that would run it.
Since I meet every criteria you've got on that thing, I seem kind of interested in it.
I think we could help you. We'd be glad to. Jill and I have seen some results ourselves. You know, we both have small children. We've lost several pounds of weight and live a totally different lifestyle. We wouldn't be up here, you know, preaching this program if we didn't feel like we personally gained from this program. I have heart disease and cancer in my family. Jill has heart disease in her family. We believe in this program. That's why we go out and try to get other people involved.
What time, what timeframe would we, if we were to take this on, would we start offering it at the beginning of the fiscal year? Does it matter?
That'd be fun.
That's what we'd shoot for.
Yeah.
I ask if we could start at any time, or would we think about starting at the fiscal year? If you had 300 employees, council, just in case you're wondering, if you had 300 employees, the cost would be $54,000 per year.
See, the best part that we see at other companies is though, two it together, like say they have an employee, like health fair or function, that they're going to have, they know most, all the employees will come to that event. Then a lot of times they'll do that in sync so that we know most employees are coming in during that time as well. So you're not pulling them off of job sites at other times.
Are the employers typically covering 100% of these costs, or are they passing some of this on to the employees?
It's a little bit of both. Some of them roll it over into their premiums that they pay each month, and some of them pay for it, they believe in the program enough to assume those costs. Especially if it's, you know, like I said, if it's going to prevent someone from having a heart attack or stroke and paying $54,000 per year, that can definitely help the return on investment later on. Those results aren't seen immediately. You know, you have to work, you know, a few years to see those.
But being self-insured, I think this is one of the biggest benefits you can have for municipality or business if you're self-insured.
It's really changed our culture. We've really seen, you know, nurses are the worst people to take care of themselves. They don't. They like to smoke and eat at odd hours of the evening and drink and do whatever. And it's, you know, I feel like if we can help them, we can help a lot of people. Healthcare professionals are the worst, yeah.
Any other thoughts, questions? And I know we paused and asked you a lot of questions. Did you want to continue?
No, I just, I'm leaving you with some information today, just to, on the left-hand side of your handout. It just gives you a little bit more information. I know you are limited on time. And I just want to make sure I gave you enough information as possible and be able to answer your questions. Behind the large packet, there is an example of what we would give to kick off the program. It goes into just an example of what the program benefits offer. We would show that, you know, the coach would be there available. And then the very back of this packet shows an example of an incentive program. Like I said, we designed that, you know, specifically for the city employees. That's just an example for you.
Any other thoughts, council? Any other questions? So we just digest this and look around.
That's pretty good.
No, there wasn't.
Okay, excellent.
Great. Thank you for your time today. Thank you very much.
Okay, Fairhope docks, proposed new fees. Lynn, Drew?
You can start with a good news story.
We have fuel.
We have gas.
We've had. I wish. The gas portion is, just hang on.
Yep, talk right into it.
The gas portion is up and running fully, so we're capable of selling gas right now. They changed out the pulser's on the gas side, which reads, currently reads gallons opposed to dollars. And the pump-out was tested today as well.
That's yours?
100%.
Are we going to advertise the prices there on the dock?
Yeah, since there is a sign ordinance, I'm basically going to go to sign now and just get some vinyl made up. And I'll just, when the doors are open, because they're three-by-sevens, and I'll just put it up there in nice, big letters.
And we're going to advertise in all of the, you know, Waterway Guide and Captain, all of the voting magazines. Bob Riggs has offered to keep us up to date with the information and those.
I'm just thinking of the local boaters, the local marinas, when they, when they drive by, need to see that price. I had a friend yesterday actually mentioned to me another marina that had the best fuel prices around. And I said, "Not after this week they won't." Hopefully, you know, it'll do well.
Okay, so that's the good news. We're coming up on, taking a look at increasing various fees at the marina. Have not determined an absolute implementation time, although we are coming up on the annual renewals for the Shrimpers. So we want, we needed to start thinking about what we were going to do. I had sent all of you a quick email outlining, and you now have in front of you a sheet outlining the rates that we're recommending for you to think about and come back to us with any suggestions that you have. At the same time, we're going to change the rules and regs to add the new abandoned vessel law that's out there and refer to it and how the marina will enact it according to the law. I think we need, that was in an old lease that we had for when the city owned, just operated just part of the docks where the Shrimpers were located. So we're going to include the new law and refer to that. So we will be bringing that forward to you. This is all sort of house cleaning that we're doing here. We're also, and hope to do this all at one time with you, requesting that Resolution Number 2390-15 be rescinded. That is the one that set up the leases primarily for the Shrimpers. It had the rules, the regs, all combined. We pulled some of that information that is now in our current rules and regulations. But as long as that resolution is sitting out there, we figured we need, and we're operating under the new rules and regs, we needed to address that one. In talking about rates for the slips primarily, we have recreational boats down there. We have the commercial fishing vessels. And then we do have one commercial vessel, that Seaport that's down there. They have two vessels. They're sort of, they're not recreational, and they're not fishing. They're a business. And Drew and I started talking about, at some point in time, we may want to have touring boats down there that take a tour of the delta or whatever out of there. They would be small boats.
We have a marine police boat there as well?
They're coming.
Okay, so that would be a second boat that would fall in that category?
Correct, yes, yeah. They're just trying to get bids on lifts right now.
So, you know, we have, that is a part of a classification that could be defined down there at the marina, and we needed to talk about what to do with that. So we are, I have, other than you all taking a look at those rates, thinking about them, giving us some input, I had only one other item I wanted to bring up, and I had checked with Marcus on this. Our lease of the property from Mike Francis is coming due, and we've already sent a letter of intent to renew. And it's a five-year renewal, $1,000 a year. There are no changes. The lease doesn't call for any changes available in it. Our question is, okay, we've told them we intend to renew. It ends July 31st, and I'm doing it now because I don't know if you need to have a resolution to renew it or if we can just send the letter and the check and say we're good for another five years.
Probably need a resolution since it's a lease.
And where's this?
This is property down at the marina. It's for the turnaround. And it's just a little strip of his property that is adjacent to the marina. Without it, we have no turnaround as you go to that one end. So we've been leasing it for a number of years.
To the northeast corner.
So if you need a resolution, then we'll get that.
Well, I was just talking to Clark, and she just said that it's already in the ordinance, and if it's like already a renewal in there, although it is, it is a contract, so you take a look and let us know.
I think you already authorized the renewal when you entered into the lease agreement. It's kind of like one of those options. You can just go ahead and initially do it. If you only wanted to do it for five years with no renewal periods, you would only do that. But you've already authorized that renewal. What I told Lynn was I didn't think you had to, but make sure that you guys were comfortable in the lease and that you knew that they were doing it. And I don't think you have to because it's already in the lease.
Yeah, but options are options. And so I think when you exercise them, you need to take action because there's, there's some contracts we've had here that have options in this city, and I wouldn't be interested in renewing them. And we've had some leases that weren't favorable, I didn't think, for the city. And just because there's an option, I wouldn't, I wouldn't renew them on the same terms. I mean, I don't think this is one of those instances where we don't want to renew it, but it might be safe to just do it. It's just one quick resolution.
Okay.
And that way we don't, you know, we don't set a precedent for not having looked at it because, like I said, there are some that I know when they come due, there's going to be some council members and staff alike that want to change those terms when options come available.
Okay.
I think to be on the safe side, we should.
Okay, we'll set that up for an agenda. So I don't know if you want to, you know, think about these rates. We need to be able to address the, any changes for the commercial fishing vessels because their leases all come due and payable. They pay annually August 15th. So that means we need to get out to them in July at the latest. Our, what our prices are going to be and give them the opportunity to digest that and prepare for a lease on the 15th of August.
Lynn and Drew, I have a few questions. The livable board, the $10 per foot per month plus $125, the $125 is an annual, is that?
Monthly.
That's monthly?
It's monthly. Right now, it's $75. It's $50 to $75, depending on its sail or power.
Okay, so $30, I mean, I'm sorry, 30-foot boat would be $300, plus $125 would be $425 a month. Okay. And then on the...
How many livable boards do you think are there? Or do you know there? I got about 11 now. 11?
We're capping livable boards. We're not taking on any more livable boards. We're capping livable boards. We're not taking on any more livable boards.
For the, two more things, the, the commercial boat, I know you left that blank, and I know we traded an email or so today, and I thought that, you know, I know that they, they're purchasing a lot of fuel, but at the same time, we, we're gonna have great prices on fuel, which is an incentive for them to stay and, stay right there, and that doesn't mean you charge them a lot more, but I don't know that you give them a great discount because they're buying fuel, you know, that's kind of part of the benefit.
Mm-hmm.
But then those slips are not, I mean, they're not like great slips right now, at all. So I, I would propose a 7 or 7.50 per foot per month. I mean, that's, that's cheaper than they'll find anywhere.
They're currently at $5.
Yeah, they're going under the recreation.
Mm-hmm.
But if you're going up to 10 on everybody else, I think that to incentivize them to stay, even 7 or 7.50s are still just a, you can't beat that rate. You can't find that anywhere. What do y'all think, counsel?
I have no input on that.
I don't know anything about it.
Were you talking about this?
I don't know, I don't know what they charge at all.
All right.
Won't take a day to find out, though.
About 7.50, going once? Anybody object to that?
Aye. I'm just kidding. 7.50 is perfect. I just, I mean, because they're, as you look at it, you know, like you said, you look at the slip conditions and the environment that they're in, right, currently in, until we can actually go in and revamp everything, so.
Yeah, I think you could charge more if it was in better condition, but it's not.
You'll notice, too, that what we've done is, we've done away with the X price for sailboats, X price for powerboats, and we've just averaged it all out with everybody the same. Just keep it simple.
I think so. Then the last question, I guess, is just that question whether or not we want to give the free pump-out to the long-term slipholders. What's common? I mean, the marinas that I'm familiar with, they still charge their resident boats for a pump-out service.
Well, we, we talked about this after the Mobile Bay Keepers report came in, and we know what could potentially happen. And it, we just thought that, well, we want to encourage anybody who's down there long-term to, to use the pump-out. And if there's any way that we can help as a city facility in encouraging people to do that, then this might be a way to do it.
That's a pretty cheap sewer service if you have a livable board, though. Free, free sewer. I mean, there's not many residents getting free sewer in town.
Well, most of them will still use, you know, the livable boards until they start disappearing, basically, vacate, or leaving. You're gonna, they'll be using the restrooms, because they're gonna be too lazy to take their boats over there.
I have that concern as well.
So that's why it's kind of, it's an incentivizer to, you know, I mean, it's five bucks, even though you are raising their, their slip fee and their livable board fee's up.
Right, you know, it's covered there, that's true. And it's typically 75 a month now?
It is now.
It's 50.
50?
It's 50 right now for sailboats.
So you could justify it.
75 for power.
Yeah, 75, 75 for power, but there's no difference. I mean, sailboat's got a motor on it.
Right.
You know?
They got their TVs, their computers and everything else.
Right.
And if you think about it, you know, trash disposal, washer and dryer, all that stuff's already free anyways.
Yeah, so we're giving free garbage service, too, right?
Yeah. There's a lot of freebies in there.
Yeah.
That people don't realize.
And this, this begins to cover those costs.
What was the cost per foot per month right now, the livable boards?
It all depended on the length of the boat and whether it was a sailboat or whether it was a powerboat.
What was the...
Sailboats are $8.
Eight was eight, was that the max?
Yeah, that's for, for, you know, a 12-month lease.
Okay, so you're kind of going up, say, on the average of 25-foot boat and going up 50 bucks a month on that as well?
Mm-hmm. Trying to plug some loopholes here.
Yeah.
What were the commercial fishing rates now?
Uh, 600 a year.
Is that going to include, that'll include power and water as well?
Nothing else changes with them. At least it's pretty.
Back to the pump-out, is there a way to monitor the livable board's pump-out frequency? What are we doing? Is there a law when slip number 12 comes to pump out, last time he pumped out?
There's no law on that. I mean, if they pump out, I mean, Coast Guard.
A log, like, yeah.
Slip 12's never pumped out and he...
He lives there.
I'm just wondering, yeah, he lives there.
I mean, it all depends on if they, you know, use the facilities on-site there. That'd be the only thing. But I mean, if they pump out, you know, the only really thing they could do is Coast Guard can come down, and if there's a check valve, or not the check valve, the seacock, which is the ball valve, is open, you get, you're fined. It's automatic.
Have we known them to ever check a single boat there?
I've never even seen the Coast Guard out there.
Yeah, I've never seen them check it, ever. Any other questions? I like the proposals with the, with that addition of the commercial boat, right?
You have the operating hours?
Oh, that's, that's in your email. Yes, you'll need to cover the operating hours.
And then the other thing, too, is the, we do, we figured out the lodging tax. So we'll be incorporating that for transient vessels.
Uh, you cover the, the operating hours, because I didn't put that on the slip fees.
They don't have a copy of that, do they?
Probably not with them.
I've got it.
Do you?
I'll print it out your email. So 8 to 5 Wednesday through Sunday and closed Monday and Tuesday?
Well, that's as of staffing right now.
And that's, that's the in-season? Is that season or...? Okay. Season is April 1 to October 31st, and then 8 to 5 Wednesday through Sunday, closed Monday and Tuesday, so that we have staff down there without getting overtime or anything like that on the weekends when we're, be most busy during season. And then off-season will run November 1 to March 31st with the marina being open 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, closed Saturday and Sunday. Now, what is common amongst marinas that can't be open 24/7, there are numbers posted, and they are advertised in the various boater publications, a number to call to make a reservation after hours and for fuel after hours, and we will arrange to have somebody there. We just don't want somebody sitting down there waiting all day long for somebody to decide to fill their boat. That's a waste of time and city money.
Well, those fuel dock hours, 7 to 3, that's a little bit concerning. Somebody gets off work, they want to run down there and, you know, fuel up their boat for a trip the next day, but they can't get off work before...
Oh, they'll call, they'll call and make a reservation. They'll know that. We'll, we'll train everybody, you know, who comes by. They'll just call that phone number, and we'll have somebody there when they need to be there to be fueled.
Do you have your two dockhands part-time working now?
Mm-hmm.
Is that working out well?
Yeah.
Okay.
They need more hours, but yeah.
Well, you mentioned overtime. I mean, can you just, can you hire more part-time people if you need them? And is it worth it to do that?
When we start pumping fuel on a regular basis, it's probably gonna be worth it.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
And what I'll go over for this next budget, RSA is requiring us to send in all hours, not just full-time. So even if they work a few minutes over 19 hours, now we're gonna be required to give benefits. So it's probably something we're gonna have to steer away from soon, because 19 hours is not much for part-time. And in this case, we probably will need a full-time person, so.
RSA is making us do that?
Mm-hmm.
The... We don't have to participate in RSA, do we? And that's not a mandatory, it's not a federal law or anything, is it?
Retirement, Alabama has.
It'd be tough starting your own retirement program.
Yeah. I don't know. I see what you're saying about the hours and going over, and, you know, if we're gonna participate, and we are, you know, if you have to, and everybody has to, but that seems a little...
It's, it's basically new. I'm not sure when it starts, but it starts very soon, and it's gonna be a big liability. In other words, I mean, we cannot allow any part-time dyslexia or anything.
Unless we lobby for more hours for part-timers.
But that would be a state thing. That would be a state thing.
Yeah, yeah, but the cost, you know, if you got somebody working 19 hours a week, part-time, some of that might even be seasonal by the time you, if you make them full-time, you add on benefits. Effectively doubled what you're paying them.
But if you're gonna have to pay for benefits, it's gonna be a lot more expensive for part-time, because it would be the same benefits as full-time.
Without getting the, the advantage of the work, the hours.
Are you saying part-time workers are gonna go away?
No, I'm saying that it's just gonna be a lot stricter. And I think Nancy Bell can probably explain it better, but it's a, it's a concern. It's a concern for hiring more part-time, which we definitely want to have available, but...
But we may have to look at part-time, some part-time positions being seasonal versus part-time, and you start playing a game.
But then you, it has to be a legitimate seasonal.
Mm-hmm. So my question is, you know, we can put together resolutions to cover these. Would you like all of this in one resolution? You want it divided?
One.
Okay.
Anybody else have some feedback on that?
Yeah, I'm still a little concerned about the livable board situation with that Fly Creek report, you know, where, and I don't know who's living aboard or who's not living aboard, but that the basin has always shown high contamination, what is the source? It could be one of them.
Yep.
I would like to, you know, give them a free pump-out for a couple of months, and let's continue to test, and if the bacteria level goes down, then we found the source.
That's, and we have the ability here in the city to test it, so we can do that.
I think we ought to phase out the livable boards altogether and just grandfather the ones in that are there and not, not take on any new ones.
Well, we are, yeah, we're not taking on any new ones. I think we're about the only marina on the eastern shore or in Mobile Bay that has livable boards. That's something that marinas are getting rid of.
But how do you deny them, though, if somebody applies, if it's part of the, if it's allowed now, how do you disallow it?
Well, we cap them, and we can put that in our rules and regs. Livable boards are capped at, and, you know, when we drop to that level. Because right now, the way we started business down there, they're all on the same time schedule in terms of their leases, so it's hard to say you'll phase them out as their leases come due, because they all come due at the same time.
I just say phase them out as, as somebody doesn't renew their...
Right.
Their lease for that. You can't fill in a vacancy in that with, with another renter.
Right. That's, that is our thinking.
You and I've talked about that. I'd like to do, I'd like to phase that out eventually.
Mm-hmm. There is a philosophy, and I have to share with you, that's out there, that it is to our advantage because of our remote location, that we could maintain one or two because of a good neighbor watch. We have had historically down there real serious issues with drugs, other nefarious nighttime activities, kids running around and damaging boats. The lighting is better now, and we're told that, that a lot of that has been cut back because the lighting is, is better and on all night. But if a fire broke out or something, we have somebody there who will report, and that's... We have one livable board in particular who has done that, reported issues that come up, because there's nobody there.
I think we'd have to come up with some kind of contract, some kind of in-kind, you know, thing, and then you gotta worry about if you have somebody that you're trading, you know, security services with. I mean, what is the liability to the city if they're, you know, if they're getting that for free or if they're allowed to stay there when nobody else is? We definitely need to look into the legalities of whether it's...
Right, and we have time.
You know, if you offer it to, you know, only a couple of people, is that legal?
I don't think they're gonna leave tomorrow. We got plenty of time.
We had, yeah, we have time to work that out. We'll have some attrition first.
And 11 ain't going nowhere.
Livable boards are all up, there's 11 of them, do they, are they mobile, or are they, some of them just...
Some of them are actually working. They've, they've got jobs.
Yeah, but some...
Some don't?
Some are bottomsetters.
So getting to the pump-out would be an issue? No?
No, I mean, if, just, if they've got a... I mean, they, they're all aware of Coast Guard regulations as they pump over a board, you know? I mean, people do it no matter what. They're gonna do it in the middle of the night, just like anything else. You're gonna try to get away with something.
Right.
But you're gonna get hit one day.
Can we ask for a Coast Guard inspection? Can you just talk to them?
I can ask, and by the time they come down there, you're not gonna have any boats in the marina.
I have to observe notice, though. You've gotta put people on notice that you do it.
I'll check into that.
It'd be real popular after that.
Mm-hmm, real popular.
Well, but you know, also, as we move, as we move into the clean, resilient marina program, and everything we do goes in that direction, anybody, long-termers or livable boards down there are gonna be made very aware of, of what we're required to do, and therefore what they are required to do if they want to stay. So, and that's, that's an ongoing program, and we're moving into that, so everything we do has that in mind.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Drewlin? And we can say that gas is available?
Yes, I'm still waiting on my...
And the diesel's not available?
No, the diesel, the diesel pulser, they're having to put a new pulser unit on.
Okay.
But the, the gas side is, is up and running.
Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, utility rate discussion, Mr. Peterson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if y'all like paper or...
I'll just add it to the crowd.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the opportunity to discuss rates on utilities. The... The work that I had done on this, you know, is, is maybe six, eight, nine months old, but the, the conditions are basically about the same, so I, I do appreciate the opportunity to start looking at it. If you, and this was a little presentation I had done based on the, the needs from a infrastructure improvement standpoint for each of the utilities, and then looking at potentially a 25-year debt service as the basis by which we would increase rates for each of the utilities. And just to look at the, you know, from the electric side, which is the first utility on there, we do have a significant substation upgrade project we're, we're working toward now. The gas system, we've got some cast iron replacement issues we need to work on, and we're seeing that we need to pick up a little bit on our maintenance as well. We've got some corrosion, atmospheric corrosion, and some valve and regulator station maintenance that we need to be a little bit more geared up to handle. Water, we're looking at, and if you believe the, the paper Sunday and the growth projections they anticipate here, we're, we're looking at, I think we're number one, I don't know how that they figure all that, but from the 2010 to 2016 projections, and I think that percentage of growth will, will probably continue. So water, we're looking at production facilities and transmission capabilities to balance those production facilities out. And wastewater, we've got capacity, you know, upgrades we need to be making, and we're, and we're working on that now for growth outside the city, and then we've got some rehabilitation work on the existing sewer system in, in town. So we've got some, some, some work to do there.
Richard, when do you anticipate we'll need another well?
We're, we're looking at the 2020 budget cycle for a production facility. Right now, we're going through the, Dan O'Donnell's doing the groundwater capacity analysis at, at the site of well three, and that's on the intersection of Boone Lane and County Road 33. We're looking to at least put another well, maybe two wells on that site, and then the transmission capability to move it into town. transmission capability to move it into town. Now, he's gonna look at other production sites we have now for other potential capacity that we can gain from it, and it only makes sense to try to optimize the capacity that you have at each site, since most of your infrastructure's there for treatment.
But that's not included in this?
No, sure. No, the, the water main connection was in there that, that Dan McCory had talked about, and now we're looking to make sure we understand what our production capacity can be at that location, so that when we do size that production or that transmission main, we'll be in pretty good shape for what we're able to, to treat and distribute through that. So, but anyway, and, and the values of these upgrades are listed, and then the monthly requirements of debt service are there, and, you know, with, I tried very hard to be as fair as I possibly could in terms of balance and additions to the base charge, and then looking at some minor rate increases with mostly residential and small commercial accounts we have on electric. One thing I would like to do, and I, and I think these rate increases are fair for what we have today, and I think just looking at on the horizon of the projects that we'll be trying to get under our belts in the next three to four years, we, I, I think they're fair to consider today. What I would like to do, though, in this budget cycle coming up, is to have a cost-of-service study done for each of the utilities. AMEA provides a pretty good reimbursement for cost-of-service studies on the electric side, and if we can start to look at cost of service on the gas-water wastewater side, you know, that, that gives us an opportunity to be as fair as possible with future rate conditions, whether they be, you know, increases or levelization type rate adjustments based on, you know, getting into different types of customer classes right now, that we, we don't really have a whole lot of customer classes defined in water and wastewater. And so, as the area grows and we start looking at single-family versus multifamily versus commercial, there's different cost-of-service requirements for each of those customer classes that we want to make sure we're fair in how we, we charge for those services. But, anyway, and so on the, you know, the, the ordinance that, that are prepared, and I'm not sure what the schedule is for reading the ordinances or for, you know, making decisions on them, but I, I, on each one of these, in the back, you'll, you'll see on the electric print, since there's a rate comparison graph that shares what, what our existing, and this is all on the residential side, what our existing rate is compared to what our proposed rate is, and then we looked at Riviera Utilities and Baldwin EMC as two neighboring utilities that we would want to, you know, we, we wanna be competitive too. Now, and don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that we raise rates just because we think we need to, or, or because, you know, we, we just have other issues that we wanna help pay for in other areas of the city, that's not the case at all, we, we have defined needs and we have defined issues, but I also wanna make sure that we're fair, and so that when you look across the residential, electric, and, and the average residential, you know, I mean, I think our average residential usage is about fifteen hundred kilowatt-hours for, for our house, so when you get into the five thousand kilowatt-hour, you're really not comparing the average residential customer, you know, the, the thousand, the twenty-five hundred is more appropriate, and, and when you look at where we are now, you know, we're at two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents for the twenty-five hundred kilowatt-hour usage compared to, the, the rate increase we're talking about is about seven dollars more than that, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then you compare that to what Riviera charges right now, and it's two seventy-one, so we're fairly close with that. Our, our existing rate now at a thousand kilowatt-hours is a hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents, we're, we're trying to bump it up to about a hundred and twenty dollars, which is about equal to what Riviera does, so I feel good about where we are competitively, and, you know, that's important in, in this consideration as well. Gas is a little bit difficult to manage because there are some fluctuations in the rate based on the purchased gas, and, and everybody's purchased gas allotment in the base rate i- is different, and so you, you really can't compare unless you go on a month-by-month basis, and, and we have not had the luxury of doing that today with the gas. But, but I do know from looking at Spire, which is Mobile Gas, and, and their rate structure, I, I feel like our base charge is lower, and I feel like our, our cost per therm is a little bit lower right now, so I feel pretty good about that. Water, if you go back, and I don't have the graph on the gas, I am gonna get that for you, though. Water, in both water and sewer, what we looked at was, we have a base charge that is at or below any other base charge for our neighboring utilities, but our base charge includes two thousand gallons of usage for each utility, and I'm suggesting that we just allow one thousand gallons of usage with that base charge, and then start charging the, the usage rate per thousand gallons beyond a thousand, so as, as we look at all of these increases, I will say that, that, you know, any concern for raising people's rates, because we do have usage built into the rate, you know, there's always the opportunity to conserve, you know, with, with what you consume, and, and mitigate your costs that way as well as, you know, making sure we have the, the funds that we're looking at to support the improvements we're talking about making over the next couple of years.
And this is just for residential, we'd still need to look at.
Yeah, the comparisons we've done are for residential, that we, the electric rate increase we're talking about does include a commercial rate, but as far as water and sewer, really, we just have an in-town and out-of-town, and it's just one rate, we really don't have separate rates for commercial or multifamily-type things. I, I think the cost of study, that, if we're able to do that, I think that that would give us an idea about where we might wanna be and where we might wanna target those rates if we were to start to divide our customer classes into whether it be commercial, residential, industrial, manufacturing, those kind of things, although I don't think we have a whole lot of manufacturing here, but, but there are some multifamily-type applications that we could look at, too.
Okay. Question, counsel? Richard, I know you dusted this off, and we looked at this, you know, quite some time ago, and I wanna dust it off and look at it thoroughly. Again, I, I will say I do have some concerns over, you know, financing this over twenty-five years, just because we're gonna have twenty other items gonna come up in the next twenty-five years, and as we've been eliminating debt, we're freeing up monies, and, and if we're making all these capital, and if we're making all these improvements, then we don't need to necessarily bank money that we've been banking, we can spend that.
Right, and one thing I wanna bring to your attention as well, on the, on the water and sewer, we, we've also included capacity charges, that, conceptually, what the capacity charges will do, will allow for, on a per-residential basis, it'll allow for the capacity of the treatment plant cost, you know, the capital improvements of the treatment plant. Right now, we, we have a six hundred dollar in-town capacity charge for sewer. If, if you look at the two million gallons of, of water that we have available in capacity at the wastewater plant, and the ten to twelve million dollars that we invested into it, each residential customer that would contribute about two hundred and fifty gallons a day should be paying just for the capacity that we've already bought and put into that plant about twelve hundred dollars. So if you look at, when we start looking at capacity issues, and especially when you talk about a, a growth on a pretty, you know, steep curve, then we, we need to charge upfront what the capacity for both wastewater transmission and treatment cost, and we need to start looking at capacity for water well and, and transmission and storage improvements on the water system, too. So you'll see that those two costs are, are pretty significant in terms of what we have today versus what we're proposing, and then we have the out-of-town multiplier that we're putting in there, and, and when you look at that, we're using a two as a multiplier for both water and wastewater, although water's a little bit different, I think we can study that a little bit more, I don't think we have to, to be quite as bold with that multiplier. But on the wastewater side, since everything that, that is being developed is, is at the extremity of the system, I mean, it, it does take an awful lot to improve transmission capacity, you know, both at, from what we're doing now on Church Street and Value Circle and all those locations that we're doing with the transmission upgrades, but we're gonna extend that transmission upgrade all the way out, you know, to County Road one and ninety-eight, and, and we're gonna be getting out to one eighty-one, and, and the force mains and the connectivity that we wanna put into the transmission system will cost additional money as we start to move away from the plant. And one thing I wanna try to do in, in that regard is to provide some redundancy as well, where, where if we have sewer from Quail Creek discharging into a pump station on Thompson Hall Road, well, I'd like to have several options for that pump station to get water to a place where we may not be experiencing a problem, so we can start managing the way the wastewater flows through town at some point, you know, if, if we get to that point where we're managing flows, you know, and mostly during rain events, but, but if we have a, a force main that's carrying a lot of water that, that's bored into through directional board technology from some other improvement that's being done from some other, you know, utility, then we need to be able to divert that water as quick as we can and, and have the option to maintain and repair that breach in that system without, you know, shutting everything down.
And, and Richard, it'd also be nice to know, as you've mentioned before, the potential for another sewer's treatment plant, what the capacity costs are for that, it may be that the capacity cost for that is a whole lot better than the capacity cost for this treatment plant, because you have to pump it for, you know, so far through an old system, it may be worth it to, you know, sometimes it's cheaper to build new than it is to remodel and.
I know, I've done three houses, and I can tell you sometimes it's a lot less work, too, to do that, but.
So we, we need to study that as well, to see if it, if it makes more sense to increase capacity somewhere else.
And we can, you know.
Although we have two million gallons of unused capacity right here, just trying.
Right, and, and we're, we're gonna need that, I mean, we're still gonna grow within an area that's gonna be served by that plant, but, you know, the, the obvious location would be the Quail Creek golf course, and I think I've talked about this before, and a reused water system that, you know, would be something we could use for irrigation of, of the golf course, and, and potentially the, the residential areas around it. The benefit to that is that right now, if we're pumping water out of the ground to irrigate the golf course with, we can save that resource for future drinking water, which is, you know, what, what we need to do, because all of these resources are finite and, and, you know, they are limited. Now, when, when we get to the point where we start to run out of those resources, and whether that's through saltwater intrusion from the bay, or whether that's from just depleting it to the point where there's not any water stored underground that, that's, you know, able to be withdrawn for drinking water, I mean, I, I don't know when and where and how that will happen, but, you know, trying to hedge our bets a little bit, and trying to avoid having to pull water out of the ground for irrigation.
Are we pulling water out of the ground, or are we using those ponds that are out there?
Well, we fill the ponds up with wells that are.
We're filling those up.
And sometimes we'll pump the well on the other side of, of Walmart and let it flow through the ditch system.
I was gonna say, if we had a, a, a system of more retention out there, though, I don't know if that means deepening those lakes, because a lot of the water just goes through there, we're not capturing it all.
Right.
Might reduce the need for the groundwater significantly if we could dig those lakes.
And that would be.
It'd be a lot cheaper to go five foot deeper or something.
Right.
I don't know how deep they are, I'm guessing they're probably only five feet deep.
What we're gonna mention, too, is that, you know, all of this, it was in the two thousand eighteen budget, and during the presentation, it, we said that it was financing it over twenty, but I didn't think we needed to finance it, that we have the money based on the projected profits to do this over that period of time, it wouldn't change the fact that we would need to increase rates.
I agree with you.
So.
Yeah, and we'll be judicious as possible with all that, and the other issue with getting into these right-of-ways, and whether it's a storm drainage issue, or whether it's, you know, infrastructure as we start to video the, the sewer system, we, we don't know yet what all of our liabilities are with that, but, you know, there's an opportunity that, or a chance that we don't have as much exposure as we think we might, but, you know, we may find some low-hanging fruit that addresses a lot of the inflow, and we're, and we're pretty good, but, I, I mean, I don't wanna bank on that today, I, I wanna make sure we evaluate the system and know where we are in terms of capacity and in terms of the, the quality and integrity of the system.
Well, 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 Richard, I'll make you a promise, is I'm gonna call a meeting soon, and it may be a series, to.
Right.
To get council members to study this and come back with questions, and what I wanna see us do in the very near future is get this plan once and for all, you know, how we're gonna do it, how we're gonna pay for it.
Right.
You know, and it can still be just numbers in a box for each utility, this much is designated for electric, water.
Right.
Sewer, gas, each year, and we make it work, and I think we're close to that, I think we're close.
I think it can work.
Okay, so y'all be studying the rate increases, and, because that, that, I think that we could agree that, you know, he's done enough work in looking at this, that, you know, something's gotta be done, so we need to, bless it, or come up with our own suggestions.
Thank you.
Okay, so, don't go anywhere.
Next.
And, uh, let's go on, we'll just continue with the work session, and go into the potential purpose, a purchase of the property for the substation.
Right, and, and Lance Junkin, the electrical engineer for the substation project, is here, so.
Okay.
I would invite Lance to join us.
Absolutely. Good evening. Go ahead, I, I had thought I had some notes, I just remembered I gave them, I gave them to Jay prior to the meeting.
And the quick summary of the, of the history of the substation upgrade capacity analysis was that, you know, we have four out of the five substations are significantly close to at or near capacity, and of course, growth continues to affect those, age becomes an issue with several of them as well, and so when you look at how do you upgrade the capacity of these substations, and Lance, don't, if I'm speaking wrong, you correct me, but, so you look at, well, how, how do you increase the capacity of any one of those substations, knowing that it's gotta be out, it's gotta be out of service for, you know, maybe nine months to a year, with, and, and you gotta shed all that load that that substation's currently serving with the others that are almost near capacity, and so you start putting yourself in a vulnerable position, and Lance and, and his analysis, you know, made the recommendation that we build a new one that can replace a couple of them, and, and with that new one being built on, on, you know, ground that doesn't contain a, a substation site today, then, then we can get that one built without having to impact the existing ones and add load, or, or worry about issues that come from the, the load that they would have to pick up, and so that's where the Plan A was, that we would build a new substation, it would replace Church and Nichols, which are just, they just happen to be two substations that are closest together, and, and probably on the smallest lots that we have substations on, so when you look at those two sizes of the properties, that they, there's just not available space around them to really build the kind of extra capacity that one of them would need, and so that, that's where we are with that property. And I know you have questions about it, and Lance?
I, I do, and I'm going to be looking at my notes a lot, so I may fumble through some of this, it's pretty technical. In the study that we had performed a couple of years ago, there's that option A, B, and C that you've mentioned multiple times, and, and I wanna kinda exclude option C for the time being, and talk about kinda option A and option B, and if you look at option A... And if you look at Option A versus B, if you're talking about the capacity increase that you get, according to my numbers, Plan B, council might want to make a note of this, the capacity cost is about $94.35 per kilovolt amp. And if you go with Option A, your capacity costs about $156, I'm sorry, $158.16 per kilovolt amp. So you're going up $64, or, you know, roughly, you know, 67% on your capacity cost. So the question is, does it make sense to go with Option A instead of B right now? Because we can increase our capacity, and we would be fine for a while, and B would leave Church Street, which can't be grown, it's fixed, but it would allow for some fairly substantial upgrades at the Church Street substation. Correct me anytime I'm off here, because I may get some of this wrong.
Go ahead.
A is almost a total redo, but it does require the combining the Church Street with the Nichols Avenue substation. But the Nichols Avenue substation does have some space for not only upgrades, but for some expansion. And so we would save about $3.1 million in the near term, and it would buy us seven or eight years of time. And at this point, I say, yeah, and then you may not be able to buy that land, it may not be available in seven or eight years, but at least you may not have to combine the two substations. So what I would say is, I think we ought to really seriously consider Plan B. I know we talked about A, but there is a lot of, there's a lot of money that's going to be spent, so-called debt expenses on Plan A, about $1.35 million that we'll never recover. So, and then I had the question I told you I was going to ask, Richard, is, are there advances in substation technology that allow us to have more capacity in the same footprint? Because we all know electronics are getting smaller, but they may not be in, you know, power distribution systems. We all know they are computers, phones, you know. I used the example to Richard last week that, you know, there was a time when I had a computer at work that would occupy a space of this room, and I'm quite certain that my cellphone's more powerful than that computer now. So is the same technology occurring in electrical capacity, energy capacity and distribution? I don't know the answer to that.
Yes, sir, that's a good question, and it's a good analogy, but it's, the truth is, is just about the opposite. It's, you'll see, you don't see new substations today anywhere near the size of Church Street or Nichols Avenue. Any new substations you see along the road, they're bigger, they're larger usually, I mean, almost always on the new ones. You need a little more space for safety-wise, you have the height issues, and both of those are in code violation right now. The height issue on the regulators in both of those two substations is in violation. So, of course, height is one thing, but footprint is another, and I realize that. Power transformers, the main big component in the substation, they may have gotten a little bit smaller. They've done efficiencies on, so they can do a better job staying cool, but we're talking inches, or maybe a feet or two, a foot or two.
Right. Not 50% reduction in area.
As far as the whole yard, you're going to have, by doing the double substation, like we've talked about in Plan A, you would end up with more than twice the capacity of Nichols and Church Street combined. So you're going to have more capacity, you'd have to have a control building, I mean, far more capacity. So it's like a double, it is a double substation. So its footprint, it would need to be 200 foot square is pretty well, would be the minimum you'd want it to be fenced in. It does not have to be square. It could be, it could be rectangular, but the short side doesn't need to be shorter than about 150 feet, and this is fenced in. So, but it's far, pretty close. That's what we'd normally go for. Yes, sir. So it's not the same as the electronics in the space. It's really not.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's one question that I know that we had. Does the land that you're considering, is it, is it large enough? Is it at least 200 by 200?
It's 200 by 200, exactly.
It is exactly 200 by 200.
And it's directly across the street from the existing substation. Now, I will say that the property around the existing substation, and it's not, it's a long rectangular chopped-up piece of property that is next to it, and I've reached out to the real estate person just to see what kind of, but I don't think it's going to serve our purpose, and they're asking a pretty good bit of money for it. So I think, at this point in time, I'd rather focus on the one across the street that...
When you say, "across the street from the substation," we talked about two.
Yes.
Which substation?
Young and Nichols.
Okay.
What's the size of that lot currently, the Nichols substation?
65 by 120 or something like that, maybe 140.
Be the southwest corner of Nichols and Young?
No, it'd be the northwest corner.
The new lot?
The new lot.
The new lot would be the northwest.
Northwest corner, yeah.
As far as whether you go with Option A or B, it's totally, obviously, your call. And you're right on your math, and it's just an issue of timing, and, you know, how far out into the future you want to be. So, I mean, it will be, the hardest part of implementing Plan B is what Richard was explaining to you. Doing it, you don't have excess capacity during peaks, you do not have excess capacity. So you have enough capacity to where you can barely get by if you lose one substation. Well, if you take that substation out, which is what you will have to do to improve that lot and improve the facilities on that lot, then you just took away your contingency. The duration, for the many months it'll take to do that, then you don't have a contingency.
And do it all in October, one month.
Well, you, I mean, it's a good point. You're a good point, and you'll have to think about that, because that is, that's a fact. But whereas, like Richard said, if you built it over to the side, all the world keeps on going fine, you still have your contingency.
So you would operate the two substations in a matter of days or a couple of weeks? You would transfer everything to the new and then just dismantle?
That's correct.
Is there any value to the two that we would dismantle?
Very little.
Spare parts or anything?
Just scrap.
Oh.
Just scrap. It really is, it's just scrap.
I think that we would get, I'll tell you how much life...
The breakers, the breakers that are in there are relatively new. We can reuse the breakers, they will be useful. But the steel and the buswork is total scrap. You know, at Fairhope Avenue, we would be using that transformer as our spare. So I don't mean, I was just speaking of those two substations when I said scrap.
I'm trying to look at that capacity increase. Just going to Option B gives us 12 divided by 88, 10%, 10 or 12% roughly, I'm just calling an eighth, all around, doing eighths of 12% roughly. Which really isn't that great of an increase in capacity either. I think that's a negative of going to be. Yeah, you'll get by for, you'll get by until you exceed 12% demand.
Eight, 10 years, you'll be looking at whatever it costs at that time to improve what you...
Electric industry, too, we're worried, you know, there's people that are worried about decreased demand, you know, with technologies, LED and more efficient, you know, appliances and whatnot, but I think that our growth is probably going to outpace the efficiency gains, you know.
And the cost of transformers and substation equipment is definitely over-eyes right now.
That's a good point.
It's definitely over-eyes.
What kind of annual rate?
Probably, and I don't, with all the talk of tariffs and all, it's jumped up probably 10%, 5 to 10%. They say it's kind of leveled out for now.
So that's an annualized rate?
That's an annual rate, just, but that's not, I don't want to, you think that'll be the same way over the, every year for the next five years.
You can only take a snapshot.
It's been about that over the last two, though, that's for sure, at least.
I know that, I saw some emails exchanged, and we didn't want to necessarily talk about prices for purchasing land, but I don't disagree with you, Mayor. I don't know that it's something that was going to be, like, negotiated. Are we talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, are we talking tens of thousands?
The appraisal for that property is $70,000, and I think there's an opportunity to share some of the cost of environmental assessment, and then, you know, we talked about, too, that that land has a pretty good slope to it. Substation sites tend to want to be more level than slope, so that there's some additional site work involved that I think we could work, you know, a little bit of a discount to some of the price through that part of the effort that we'd be putting into the site itself. And, I mean, I can't speak for the owner of the property, but I feel good that they'll be honest and fair with us in how we assess the value to us and how it affects the value they'll sell it to us for.
The cost to make that lot suitable to build on will be at least what the lot is. It'll probably be more than what the lot costs to be.
Going rate of the price of land at Fairhope, that's still not, that doesn't concern me a lot, really. Does it concern you at all? That sounds, doesn't sound like a bad price.
It really didn't strike me that way either.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I thought that substation was going to cost...
All right, I wish we'd have tried to call out.
One percent.
Yeah.
Counsel, I'd ask you to think about this. We need to act on this, you know, pretty quick. If you want to give the clerk some feedback to share with me, so we can decide whether to get it on the next agenda, or, and I guess that would look like authorizing the mayor and Richard to negotiate the purchase of the land, is what that would look like, which, you know, like you said, the negotiation's not going to be much negotiating, it's going to be, you know, paying what the fair price is for it. Okay, I'd ask you all to do that and give back to us.
One question, is there, further north on the road, Park on the left?
Sampson Field.
Is there any carve-out possibility?
Well, I was going to ask you that question. Actually, I'm going to dash that. How much land is available there?
That's about 8 acres.
Do we really, do we want that in a park? I mean, something, it's city property, I mean, it's pretty, I don't know how, I don't know what the terrain is there on the backside.
I was thinking of the southeast corner, which would be right on Young Street on the south end, but that area is ideal.
And we got an acre there?
You have 8 acres there.
Well, but, you know, we've got tennis courts, and we talked about this at the supervisor's meeting Friday, and Tom Cool has some plans to build out that park for recreation needs, and we'd have to twist his arm pretty hard at this point in time to convince him that we have a better use for it. But here again, I mean, we can evaluate that and look at it.
I'd encourage the council to have, you know, Richard take you by the site and look at that. I'd like to look at it. You know, maybe that can be, you know, you can put a landscape buffer around it, and nobody will ever know it's there. I mean, it's not going to be buzzing like high-power transmission lines.
But then you need to replace that recreation footprint on another piece of property somewhere else is what you'd be looking to try to accomplish, and whether there's value in having it at that location versus, I mean, y'all talked about price of property for recreation a couple of meetings ago, I think, and I don't know what those numbers are, but you'd still be looking to replace what...
Still looking.
Just the distance from the southern edge of the parking lot to the southern edge of the lot is just about 200 feet, a little over 200 feet, so that's really a good, a good measurement there, and then you would just go out into it. You wouldn't be taking up 20% of the overall acreage, and maybe actually a little less than that, but I'm not trying to...
Good information. We've got to have information.
And that land is definitely buildable that I'm talking about.
All right. Well, folks, we better adjourn real quick. Thank you. We're looking into this, counsel, and we're going to go ahead and adjourn.